Good afternoon, everybody. We'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Friday, March 20th, 2020, to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noting that all members are present, I'll read the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: WCTV Channel 9, Comcast Xfinity Channel 37, Verizon FiOS, and live stream on wctv.org. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but with every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real-time via tele- technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post the town's web video on the website. It will be available on WCTV. And one more order of business before we continue is the transmitting of Treasury warrants, 37, 37A, 38, and 38A. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. And thank you to my colleagues, our staff, and the viewers at home for joining us here today. We're broadcasting to you live in a little bit different fashion here, as you may be used to. The purpose of this emergency meeting of the Board of Selectmen is to update the members of the Board and our entire community on the latest information we have regarding the COVID-19 health crisis and the town of Wilmington's response to date. We are practicing good social distancing here in the room. All the members are spread out, and we are limiting the room to no more than 10 people, including Board members, staff, and we are hoping to keep the meeting relatively short. We will be providing much information. We'll be hearing from our Health Director and our Town Manager. A few quick comments I'd like to make before we begin is that we will be providing information to residents in a number of different ways. First off will be the town's website. The town also has a Twitter page. The Board of Health has a very good Facebook page. Police and Fire Departments both have Twitter and Facebook pages. And WCTV will be broadcasting the latest information. They've already begun today to put out the latest information for residents who may not be online or on social media. So please tune into WCTV, Comcast and Verizon. It's available, Comcast Channel 9, Verizon 37. And also, thank you to our friends at the Town Crier and the Wilmington Apple, who will also be putting out updates as they get them. We want to encourage residents to sign up for the town's emergency notification system. This system enables us to provide you with critical information quickly. You will receive time-sensitive messages wherever you specify, such as your home, your mobile phone, or your business phone, email address, or text messages, and more. So please take advantage of that. We want to thank our school department and Dr. Brand for the work they are doing and have been doing to keep our kids safe and engaged while they are outside the walls of our school buildings, and for providing meals to those who are in need. Thank you to the Wilmington School Committee for continuing to meet and move our school operations forward during difficult times. I, like many of you, streamed their remote meeting last night. I have been in regular communication with Chairman Jen Bryson, and I appreciate her leadership during this time. Thank you to all of our local businesses who have stepped up and helped out residents. The stories being shared are remarkable, and there are far too many to share, but it has been incredible show of support from our local businesses. Special thanks to our grocery stores and their workers, who have worked tirelessly to keep the shelves stocked and to make changes in the hours to accommodate our seniors. I encourage all residents to join me in supporting local businesses by taking advantage of takeout orders and delivery options. Our Substance Abuse Coordinator and our Veteran Services Officers are available for anyone who's struggling through this difficult time. The manager will touch upon that more a little bit later. And most importantly, thank you to our first responders and medical personnel and our crisis management team, who are working around the clock to keep us safe. And now, at this time, I would like to turn it over to our Health Director, Ms. Shelley Newhouse, to provide us with the latest update. Shelley, thank you for being here.
Hi, everybody. Not much to talk about, which is nice. Knock on wood, Wilmington has no positive cases of COVID-19. I really just want to encourage the public to continue to do the great job that they're doing to social distance themselves. I see lots of people out walking and riding their bike, and I think that's great, because you need to get out and have...
Shelley, I'm sorry, Tindall.
Sure.
Do you mind moving closer to that microphone? Ron's indicating that we can't. We want to make sure folks can hear you well.
Trying to practice...
I appreciate that.
Safe space. Want me to start over?
If you don't mind.
Sure. So Wilmington right now has no positive cases of COVID-19. Knock on wood, which is a good thing. We continually get updates every day from MassDPH, conference calls, electronic reporting. So just as fast as they come in, we investigate them. It's nice to see that the public is still social distancing, which is really what we need to do to flatten the curve of this virus. It's nice to see that people are out walking and riding their bikes, and it's good to get out, fresh air, but really try to remember to limit yourself to less than 10 people and just social distance yourself as much as possible. If you can just stay in your own homes, in your own neighborhoods, I think that's great, because it's not what, you know, we're worried about the high-risk populations contracting the virus. So, you know, you may feel great, and you may be a carrier, but then you're bringing it home to your grandparents that live with you, or those who are at high risk. That's really what we're trying to do, is flatten the curve. And hopefully, it works.
Great.
Right now, in Massachusetts, there's 413 confirmed COVID-19 cases.
Shelley, I know that you've been working around the clock. We really appreciate all your efforts in keeping people informed. I mentioned at our last meeting how great, I think, your Facebook page has been in providing updates, and then now WCTV is broadcasting those messages as well. So thank you for that, and I think I can speak for everybody in the room here, that we really appreciate all you're doing. And I know you'll be in constant communication with us, as things are constantly evolving by the minute.
Thanks.
So, thank you very much.
Sure.
Before we move to the managers' portion, I know Shelley is going to be here for a couple of minutes. Does anybody have any questions for Shelley before she leaves?
I'll just say real quick, Shelley, I think you're doing an outstanding job, and this probably, in my capacity as a selectman, probably the last time I'll ever see you. So I just want to let you know that one thing about you, you've always been accessible, you've been honest, and more importantly, you've always been fair to people, and that goes a long way. And I just want to at least say that to you, considering what's happening here. And just to say something a second ago, you said it's nice to see some family out and about. Doc Wallens' house by High Street in Middlesex Ave, I was right there at the corner, had the window down. I saw a husband with two boys and his wife with a daughter, and I said to the husband, "Very nice, the family together." He goes, "Oh, hi, Mike." And as they drove by, he said the same thing to the wife. She gave me this look, like, "I don't think she knew who I was." But I think that means a lot, to tell people to get out and just play it smart. Thank you. I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Shelley?
I would just ask, I guess, is there anything that you need at this point? Is there anything that, you know, besides practicing social distancing and, you know, hand washing and less than 10 people, is there anything else that you feel at this point you need, any extra supports that you need, or anything like that that we can be doing?
No, not at this moment. I have a really great staff. That's been great through this whole thing, our office, our public health nurse, our administrative assistants have been great. And we talk constantly, you know, 24/7. So, and we'll still be working if there's ever a shutdown or anything. I'm still going to be working. So if people have any concerns, they can email me, they can call me if they have my cellphone number, so I'm always available to talk. Thank you.
I just briefly, no questions, Ms. Newhouse. I just wanted to thank you for what I can only imagine has been an incredibly busy month, as I think I saw earlier today that nationwide, two weeks ago, there was less than 300 cases, and now it's over 16,000. And it's just been a very quickly evolving situation, and there's a lot of uncertainty, and certainly anxiety is running high. So the hours that you put in are certainly appreciated by, I think, everyone in the community, so thank you.
Sure, and as, so, people will certainly get alarmed, because as more testing becomes available, which it's going to, starting right now and tomorrow, we're going to see a spike in positives, just because that's the nature, because the more testing that we do, the more positives we're going to see. So I think we'll see a spike, and then hopefully, we'll see it flatten out, which is what we're aiming for.
Mr. Kira.
Mr. Bindel. Shelley, I echo my colleagues' comments. You guys are doing a great job for the residents of Wilmington. Just, I guess, a question, and I don't even know if you can really answer it, but one of the interesting things I hear about is, you know, some of the athletes who test positive, but they say, "Oh, we feel great." You know, this, I show no symptoms. And you mentioned about, you know, some people may be a carrier.
Yeah.
We really don't know how to, you know, if we go to our families' folks' home or something, and we happen to feel great, don't know that we're a carrier. I mean, you know, you want to give your mama, your dad a hug.
You can't.
Yeah, we just want to emphasize that.
You can't. That's what social distancing comes in, right.
Because we don't know how it transmits from one to another, right?
Yeah. Younger, younger, the younger population, if they even have it, you know, it's very mild, and they might think that they have a mild cold, but they're the ones that can bring it back into the more susceptible population who can't recover from it. So, and that's where, you know, you hear the social distancing and stay away, and don't, don't give hugs, and, you know, it's tough. I get it. I'm doing it, too. It's boring. I'm home. There's only so much TV you can watch. You can't do any, you know, if it's crappy outside, you're stuck in the house, and how many walks can you do during the day? But it's, we really, if we just stick together, we can do it in, in just a couple more weeks. I think you'll see it make a difference. And the DPH is always, you know, epidemiology is always working on trends. They're always taking the data, so they're the ones that are going to see, you know, what we can do about flattening the curve, and if it's working. And I think it's going to work. I mean, it took a long time, but it worked in China. So it will work. We just have to do it.
Shelley, again, thank you very much. I think you'll be pleased to know that usually, contrary to what people might think about this group, we normally meet in the manager's office and say hello to each other and shake hands, and exchange friendly stories about family and stuff like that. Although everyone has remained very cordial, we did, we skipped the handshake, so you'd be proud of us there, and I think we're going to continue to try to do that to lead by example. So appreciate everybody's efforts here today. So Shelley, thank you very much.
Sure.
I know you're very busy and...
I'll stick around for a little bit, see if you guys have questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. And before we move to the manager's update, I just want to provide folks with a little bit of background on how we arrived at this point. It's obviously been a very fluid situation. A lot has happened in the last week. So just to keep people informed about what the town has been doing, I'd like to mention a few items. First, meetings and conference calls have been occurring since last week with the Health Director. Since she was alerted to three presumptive positive cases last week, fortunately, upon receipt of the tests, all three came back negative. And as she indicated a few moments ago, as of this moment, right now in time, we have no cases here in Wilmington. Public Buildings Personnel cleaned and disinfected all six schools between Thursday, March 12th, and Friday, March 13th. On Friday, March 13th, the Senior Center, July 4th Building, and the former Town Hall were cleaned and disinfected. On Saturday, March 14th, the Town Hall was cleaned and disinfected. And I should also mention that the room was, again, disinfected and cleaned here for this meeting, and I appreciate the efforts there. On Monday, March 16th, Wilmington Memorial Library was cleaned and disinfected. In total, 718,000 square feet of area were cleaned and disinfected in the course of less than five days. On behalf of myself and the Board, a sincere thank you goes to our custodial and maintenance crews for their amazing efforts to disinfect all these buildings in short order. The circumstances we find ourselves are unprecedented, and there is no blueprint for responding to a worldwide pandemic. The only certainty at this point is uncertainty. Earlier this week, a conference call was convened between myself, Town Moderator Rob Peterson, Finance Committee Chair John Dougherty, and the Town Manager, Mr. Hall, Town Council and others, to address the joint meeting of the Finance and Planning Board meeting, which was scheduled for Tuesday, March 17th. That meeting has been continued to May 12th at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall. At this moment in time, we hope that meeting will take place on May 12th. The change in the joint public hearing has a domino effect on the annual town meeting, which has been rescheduled from May 2nd to May 30th, Saturday, May 30th, at the Wilmington High School Auditorium. These dates are obviously subject to change if the virus continues to require social distancing measures we are currently operating under. The Town Manager and I have been in constant communication multiple times per day, probably more times than I'd like to admit, but I want to applaud the Town Manager for keeping me in close contact at all times. I think one particular day in the last couple of days, they're all blending together, but we may have talked more than 10 times on the phone. I believe it was important to call this meeting before the end of this week to provide the community and the Board an opportunity to receive the latest information and developments with respect to the spread of the COVID-19 virus and the town's response. And finally, my hope is, after we hear from the manager, who will update us on all the services that are being still available to our community, what's been closed, what's changed, and what's available, I'm hoping that the manager can describe to us that I'd like to see that this Board, under this appointment, take up a state of emergency declaration for the town of Wilmington. And I know the manager can explain what that means. Obviously, we all know that we are in a crisis situation for the state, and we are in the crisis situation for the state of emergency for the state, state of emergency for the country, but there are implications if we implement a state of emergency here in Wilmington. And I know the manager can explain that to us, and my hope is that this Board will support that declaration. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Town Manager, Jeff Hall, for an update on services and closures. Jeff?
Thank you. So as everyone knows, the first impacts of this really came about last Thursday. It seems like longer ago than that at this point, but with the school closures. Since then, we, here at the Town Hall, our emergency management team has met on several occasions, essentially with the main objective of trying to ensure that both the public at large, as well as the personnel, are as safe as possible in light of the circumstances and avoid any kind of multiplication, if you will, of the contamination, spreading of this coronavirus. So with that, we, on Monday this past week, began the process of providing services, continuing to operate in the respective buildings, Town Hall, Library, Senior Center, Veteran Services, but not permitting the public access. And it was certainly by no means intended to try to be punitive in any way, but clearly it was really a safety precaution. We've taken that approach now for the balance of the week, and at this point, we will continue to take that approach for the foreseeable future. So town offices will remain open beginning next week from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday to Friday. The Memorial Library, you'll know if you attend the library, typically, they have hours that range from 9:00 in the morning until 9:00 in the evening, and then open on Saturdays. That has been altered, so that at this point, they are open from Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. And I'll talk about some of the services that they're continuing to provide while not being available to the public. Senior Center remains open, 9:00 to 5:00, Monday to Friday, and the Veterans Services is operable, Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 5:00. And as I noted, we'll continue in this mode until it appears that the, we're able to reopen or until there is notice, perhaps, from the Governor of a shelter-in-place order. In the meantime, we encourage people, if they have questions or need access to any of the offices here, or Veteran Services, Library, Senior Center, to call. Here at the Town Hall, if people have payments that they need to make, we do have a dropbox that is right next to the main entrance that people should take advantage of. Clearly, go on our website and access our emails if you need to email us. We're also, just in the last, this past week, have been planning for the prospect that there may be some kind of a shelter-in-place order, and it may restrict the number of people that are able to work in the offices. So to that extent, we've identified particular individuals that are critical in terms of maintaining key operations. Obviously, Police and Fire, they're going to continue to operate 24/7, seven days a week, as is Dispatch, but the other key functions for us are the ability to process payroll and the ability, at least to a limited degree, it may be more restricted than it has been, but the ability to pay vendors. So to that point, we will be effective, if we go into a stay-at-home mode, we would be looking to have limited personnel come in on Tuesdays and Fridays for preparation of the warrants. And those individuals include the Assistant Town Manager, myself, our Payroll Benefits Coordinator, Brian Perry, the Town Finance Director, and one of his staff individuals. So we're, you know, clearly trying to limit the number of people that would have access at this point. We've provided those folks that, in the event that there is a closure with VPN, which is virtual private network access, to their computers, so that they can work from home if necessary. So we're planning for that possibility. Additionally, as many of you know at this point, in light of the circumstances and recognizing that the weather has improved and people are out and about, we have closed all of the town parks, playgrounds, all the courts, pickleball, basketball, tennis, any of the walking areas, whether it's passive recreation or active recreation. Again, the intent being to try to minimize the opportunities for people gathering together, and that will remain in effect until further notice. Just breaking it down on a department-by-department basis, starting with Veterans Services, and as I go along, I'm just going to offer the phone numbers to these offices in the event that folks do wish to contact them. And certainly, again, if you're looking to email them, that information is on our website. Veterans Services, 978-694-2040. Office meetings have been canceled. The VA meetings, which happen quite frequently between Veterans Services and the Boston Office, have all been canceled, but the staff does remain available for crisis situations. Oftentimes, that, they will become aware of those either through the Police Department or through Samantha Reeve, our Substance Abuse Coordinator. And certainly, they're available by phone. They will continue to process documents that may be required for access to veterans' benefits, and they will continue to process the payments. And that's another reason why we need to have certain people in, is the veterans' payments can't stop, so they will, they will continue to cycle through the warrant process. And they'll also be participating, to the extent required, in any teleconferencing that may go on between Veterans Services and their association. With regard to Elder Services, 978-657-7595. Terry Marciello and her group has continued to operate in the same mode that we are. Programs for the next 30 days have been canceled, including line dancing, bingo, memory cafe exercise programs. Also, other programs that have been postponed, the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon, which many of you may know is scheduled for the 17th, that has been postponed, so the intent is, if this breaks in the shorter term, to establish a new date for that. Similarly, the Kiwanis Club was scheduled to provide a luncheon on the 22nd of March. That is also being postponed, with the hope of scheduling at a date to be determined. And the income tax program that is provided by AARP has also been postponed. There seems to be some talk of the prospect of potentially altering the deadline on tax filings, and so Terry is monitoring that, and to the extent that the program can be continued at a date to be determined, that's our intent. In the meantime, as you know, the, the delivery of lunches to the seniors is coordinated effort between Terry's office and the food service in the schools, with the schools largely completely shut down with limited exception. She is using the services of Minuteman Senior Services for home-delivered meals, but is still making those deliveries. There is transportation available for wellness visits, although, as Terry noted to me when we spoke a day or so ago, given the circumstances and the triaging that's going on, she's seen a number of wellness appointments being canceled just because of the triaging that's going on. Another thing that Terry and her staff are doing are preparing care packages to seniors that have limited interactions with, with family and friends. They may not have family in the immediate area, and so they've put together these packages that they're delivering to the seniors, basically trying to make the point that they are not forgotten, trying to maintain that connection, and I think, she said that's, to this point, gone over very well. Also, there's continued outreach. If people need medicine to be picked up, the Emergency Fuel Assistance Program, I know she was telling me just the other day, there was a situation with a resident that needed fuel assistance, and she was working closely with that individual. Grocery pickup, and then just calls to elders who just may need to hear from somebody, so that continues to go on. She's been also in touch with the Deming Way. In fact, there was, just this past week, Panera donated some food to seniors down at Deming Way, and there's a group of seniors there that she's in touch with on a regular basis, and they in turn spread the word. So the calls, she's still receiving calls at the center from, from seniors, which is a good sign that, that they know she's, her staff is there and available. With regard to the Police Department, so the non-emergency number is 978-658-5071. Again, as the Chair mentioned earlier, people are encouraged to sign up for the Everbridge Network, so that if you need, if you need access to services and you want to be made aware of changing events, Everbridge, you want to have access to that, and that will be available to people either via their cellphone or their landline, multiple modes. So you can go online to the, the police website to access that, or if you do not have access to a computer, you can call the emergency, non-emergency number, 658-5071, indicate that you are interested in signing up, and they will take your information and ensure that you are enrolled. The lobby to the Public Safety Building remains accessible, but that is, it's limited beyond that. They have temporarily canceled the car seat installation program that they've been running, and again, that will resume as soon as conditions change, improve. They've also temporarily canceled the, all licensing and appointments for fingerprinting. And I would note that Wilmington is part of the NEMLEC group, which is a consortium of police departments in the Eastern Mass, Northeastern Mass area. And one of the values of that is obviously supporting each other, and to the extent that there are instances in which officers are affected by the virus and either quarantined or perhaps exposed themselves, there's an arrangement where we would be able to draw up on personnel from other departments, and the same would be the case if we were called upon. So those are some of the things that are going on in the Police Department. Otherwise, you know, business... Otherwise, you know, business as usual, they're responding to calls 24/7. The fire department, non-emergency number, nine seven eight, six five eight, thirty-three, forty-six. Chief Bill Kavanaugh, as many of you know, is our emergency management director, and he has really been quarterbacking many of the meetings that we've had over the last week in terms of trying to respond to these events. And that team includes police, public works, public buildings, IT, the health director, the assistant town manager. All of these individuals have convened on a number of occasions. Police and fire really already have protocols in place because of the, oftentimes when they're responding to a critical incident, they have to be mindful of infectious disease. So in speaking with both chiefs, they've assured me that their officers are being, you know, that that is being reinforced in terms of how they respond to particular incidents. With respect to public works, nine seven eight, six five eight, forty-four, eighty-one is the number. It should be noted that they're also, in many respects, first responders in the event that there are breaks in the, if a water line breaks, or we have a severe road defect, any issues with our sewer system, we have people on call that will go out day or night. Would note that the Yard Waste Center will remain open unless we are in a shelter-in-place mode. So when we talk later on about the dates, we can go through those, but the plan is to keep that open for now. Russell Disposal will continue to collect recycling and trash on the usual schedule, so people should proceed as normal. We've also given thought to the water treatment plants. So as you know, we have two water treatment plants, and those treatment plants are staffed. We want to make sure that the treatment plant operators are healthy and remain able to perform their work. And so, starting this coming week, we're going on a rotating schedule so that we don't have them all in the same place at the same time. So they'll be doing a schedule where two will be on and two will remain off, and then it'll continue to cycle out in that manner, so that in the event, and hopefully this doesn't happen, but in the event that one of them gets sick on one crew, so to speak, we can bring the other crew in and hopefully minimize any situations in that respect. The septic disposal station, which is down on Route 38, this is where all the septic pumping vehicles go to dispose of that material. That will remain open. Based upon the circumstances there, the level of contact, person-to-person contact is minimal, and we believe that we can continue to do that. With respect to construction projects in the engineering department, inspections, developers may need to receive advice or have inspections done. Those inspections specifically will be taking place from 3:00 to 4:30. Otherwise, as with the other staff in the town hall, the engineering office is open from 8:30 to 4:30. Building Department and Board of Health, so building, phone number, nine seven eight, six five eight, forty-five, thirty-one. Board of Health, nine seven eight, six five eight, forty-two, ninety-eight. Both offices are continuing to perform inspections as needed, and to the extent that there is plan review required, we are permitting individuals, basically on an appointment basis or call basis. They would call ahead, indicate that I'm looking to have a plan reviewed, can I meet you at 10:30? They come to one of the doors here at the town hall, and there's a small office area where they can meet with, whether it's the health director or the building inspector, to have plans reviewed or if they need to do a file review. So that is ongoing. The library, nine seven eight, six five eight, twenty-nine, sixty-seven. All programs have been canceled through April 10th. Book returns have also been closed just because of the inability to process the number of books that would come back. So basically, what patrons are being told is, keep your books at home. There is, any penalties that would otherwise be imposed are going to be waived for overdue books. They are promoting digital services and in terms of accessing either eBooks, music, magazines, and so on. And then book vendors, as you probably know, they're on a regular basis getting shipments of books and other material that has been temporarily suspended. Town Clerk's Office, nine seven eight, six five eight, two zero, three zero. Registrations are being accepted online and in the mail. If people are looking to register, they can also put that information in the mail slot. April 6th is the last day to register, to vote. We are still proceeding on the premise that local elections will be April 25th. However, I know that the Secretary of the Commonwealth has filed a bill that would allow municipalities, I believe through their boards of selectmen or councils, to alter that date. I would expect there will be action fairly quickly on that, but it remains to be seen. So at the moment, we're proceeding as if it is the 25th. Many of the services can be completed online, dog registration, vital records, birth, death certificates, public records requests. We have temporarily suspended notary services, and there is a website, a state website, that individuals can go to if you're looking for a notary. Oftentimes, notaries are available typically at banks, although banks are not open, unfortunately, like they have been law firms and insurance companies. Again, unfortunately, I think many cases, those will be off limits here. But with respect to the online information, it's at www.mass.gov backslash services, colon, details, backslash find a notary public. Deadlines for state offices, for those running for state office, the deadline for nomination papers remains April 28th, and for congressional positions, May 5th. And Tina Conway is working with John O'Neill to develop a Facebook page for some of those departments that don't have Facebook pages. As you know, some of the departments do, certainly police, fire, recreation, library. Other smaller departments do not. The idea is to kind of have a community Facebook page of sorts that we will then be able to, from each other respective departments, post information about changes in programs, any information that we believe would be advisable to get out to the public. With regard to marriage intentions, these are being done by appointment only, so if people are expecting to get married within a week out, those will be done by appointment only. If it's further out, six months out, then you're asked to put a pause on at least getting your marriage intentions. With regard to recreation, phone number, nine seven eight, six five eight, four two, seven zero. All trips have been canceled, at least through April 1st at this point. Many programs, unfortunately, were stopped in mid-program, so to speak, once the schools were closed. We had trips planned to the Catskills and Foxwoods, those have been canceled. Participants are being given credit in their recreation account for future trips. One of the trips that I know Karen Campbell is really keeping a close eye on, and we're hoping that things improve here, but there was a Canyonlands trip planned to Nevada and Utah for May 12th to 19th. The window of time for cancellation of that trip still remains open, but it's, at the moment, it's on. We haven't pulled the trigger yet, but that, you know, this to be determined. And as is often the case, the department will purchase tickets for various shows in Boston and other venues. In most of these cases, they require a 25% non-refundable deposit, so as a consequence, we're not purchasing any theater tickets or performance tickets at this point, so. And we did, just generally speaking, this afternoon, or staff were advised that they should proceed on the assumption that we may have a shelter in place before the weekend's over, and I don't have any inside information on that, but again, trying to stay ahead of the curve, so to speak. Those people that were, that are expected to be able to work from home, they were instructed to bring whatever materials they may need to be able to do that for a period of time. So that is where things are at the moment. Obviously, it's changing by the hour and sometimes more frequently than that.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Very important information. And again, if you missed any of that, this will be replayed and reported on through the media. But I also want to point out that I think you're very right in assuming that the possibility that could happen. I know that your office and this board is monitoring each of the press conferences that the governor's putting out, and his most recent one at 2:00 PM today indicated there is no shelter in place at this time. But we'll continue to monitor all the information that comes out of the governor's office, so I appreciate that. And I noticed that the chief of the fire department here is Bill Kavanaugh, is here in the room, and as the manager mentioned, he is our crisis management director. Chief, it's one week ago today, we swore you in as chief. It's been quite the first week on the job. I wanted to give you the opportunity to maybe update us on anything you have.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's been an interesting first week, to say the least. Like the manager said, we've been doing the best we can to keep informed with what the governor and CDC, DPH are putting out as far as this virus that's going around. We're making best efforts to keep the public informed, to keep our employees informed. Also, I mean, one of the things that we have that just came down today was the marshal has suspended all of our inspectional services on the fire side, which is something I haven't even kind of told the manager yet, that's how new it is. But one of the things that I do want to mention is that all of the crisis intervention-type things are still available. So Samantha Reeve from the police department, Lou, and his staff from the veterans' office are still available. If you're having a tough time, you need help, you know, give us a call on a kind of a non-emergency basis, and we'll take care of pointing you in the right direction. One of the things, again, as the manager alluded to, is that we are taking some additional precautions on the public safety end of things, to make sure that we're trying to keep our first responders as safe as possible. So in a lot of situations with fire and medical calls, if they're not life-threatening CPR or something of that nature, my personnel are taking a couple of extra precautions, so they're moving a little bit more deliberately, if you will. Please be as honest as you can with any of your symptoms or symptoms of people in your family. And I believe that goes the same for, you know, Chief Desmond's personnel. If you're calling for a police issue, but someone in the house is sick, please, please let us know beforehand so that we don't have any incidental exposures. We're trying to keep our first responders safe. They don't have a choice but to go to work and answer your calls, so that will be a huge help to us. You can answer any questions you have as well.
Yeah, please, Chief. Thank you so much for your efforts and for your department, and also, you know, through your crisis management team, the police department and others. I appreciate you, you've been giving me daily updates. I've been on a number of conference calls with you, and I appreciate your leadership during this time. Does anybody have any questions for the chief? Mr. E.
Oh yeah, this might be for Mr. Hall or you, Chief Kavanaugh. How is the town doing in terms of making sure that our soap, our hand sanitizer, disposable wipes, things like that are stocked?
George Hooper is the point person on that, and that is a challenge, quite frankly. You know, we, and to some measure, and I'll let the chief speak about this, I think he's also made some efforts to get some of those supplies. I believe we're in decent shape, but, you know, if this goes for a period of time, it's going to be a problem.
I agree. Right now, we're actually okay. I talked to Chief Desmond today. His personnel are good, my personnel, at this current juncture, pretty good. I've had to get creative a little bit to get some supplies. My operations people, Lieutenant Woods, Lieutenant Daley before him, did a good job kind of having just normal things on hand, like the manager said, that we typically use anyway. So we're in a lot better shape than most departments. However, there were a few things we were running low on, couldn't get them through our normal avenues. I knew a couple other different ways, just from my own company, my mother's place, that we were able to get some additional supplies for our membership. I've been in touch with MIMA, with the Region 3, 4 EMS as well, yeah, Region 4, rather, MIMA Region 3, EMS Region 4, to get some supplies, to get on the air lists. And Representative Robinson actually reached out to me before I get into this meeting and asked me what we could possibly need, and he's going to put in a request on our behalf as well, as soon as he gets Tokesbury's numbers. So we're plugging into everything that we can. Like the manager said, Georgia's in good shape currently. However, the longer this duration goes on, the more difficult it's going to be to get supplies.
Is there anything you need from us or the community that helps put you and your departments and the other emergency first responders into a better position to continue to protect us?
I mean, the big thing I can ask, and I'll echo DPH and the governor and Mayor Walsh, is if you have things laying around at home, gloves, N95 masks, surgical masks, any sort of like disposable eye protection, those things are at a critical level right now at a lot of the hospitals. If you have them, you're not using them, we would appreciate the donation. You can bring them right into the lobby, and, you know, like I said, we're in good shape right now. I'd make sure that our supplies are good, and then we will follow that up to Winchester, Lahe, any of the Boston hospitals that we come in contact with. Because in all honesty, I know a couple people that are working at those hospitals, and they're reusing masks all day long because they don't have enough to throw them out. So we need to keep those people healthy, just like we need to keep our first responders healthy, so that we can, you know, do our best to face this challenge.
Yeah, along those lines, I know Mass General put out a call for 3D printers, and I did reach out to our librarian because they do have a 3D printer, and they had already actually asked, and the one that they have is too small to actually produce the N95 masks, but it was at least good to see that while the library is not actually seeing patrons come in, their hearts and heads are certainly in the right place, and they're trying to pitch in to do what we can. So thank you for the hard work that you've put in, and I think it's, I'm sure it's pretty much all hands on deck at this point. And Mr. Hall, thank you for that very thorough summary of the different planning and measures that you and the other folks in town have done to protect not only the residents but employees as well. So thank you both.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, I can honestly say, I believe you're doing a good job, a great job relative to the crisis at hand. The department heads are doing a great job. And obviously, my 61 years on this planet, I've never seen anything like this in my life, number one. The other thing is, obviously, we don't know, we're not Nostradamus, we don't know what's going to happen several weeks from now. The governor could create this stay of this issue longer with the residents in the town. And I know it's going to affect people medically, also it's going to affect people financially, especially people in the private sector on fixed incomes. Now, I know the property tax bill's due April 1st. What are we going to do to try to help folks out there? Are we going to consider, and I would hope to think we would, maybe consider a grace period relative to the property taxes being paid? I just bring that out because, you know, that's, that would be a concern, because there are people that are self-employed, not really working, there are people in the private sector, some are getting paychecks, some aren't getting paychecks. And I get it, and even people in the public sector, it's going to hurt. You know, is there anything we can do as a community to try to give maybe a grace period relative to the property taxes that are being paid? Is that something that you could consider and maybe get back to us?
Well, the real estate taxes, and for that matter, the excise, those are, the payment deadlines and the elements associated with those taxes are established by the state legislature, I would suspect, but I don't know at this point to what degree any conversations are going on there. But those, that, you know, issuance of real estate taxes is not discretionary on the part of the cities and towns. You know, the rules and requirements and deadlines are enacted by the legislature, so we don't have the ability as individual municipalities to waive taxes or things like that. That would be something that would have to come through the legislature.
I appreciate your honesty in that. I didn't realize that, but maybe we can send a letter to a legislative delegation, something to look at. I understand, it's medical, we need to look at that, but also, it's putting a financial burden on a lot of folks in this town and a lot of folks in the Commonwealth. That's something that we've got to try to...
I know he has issues to attend to.
Yeah, just one question. Thank you both for your report. Just, I'm assuming that you have protocols in effect now for in-house issues such as if someone comes and is not feeling well or has a cold or, not necessarily this virus, but it makes people anxious, makes them nervous. Is there a protocol where you quietly have your department head to go up to that individual and say, maybe you should go home? Even though we can't force anybody to go home, I'm sure. But in this time of uncertainty, I mean, do we have anything that...
We've actually had a circumstance like that. In fact, it was the beginning of the week, I believe, and the last week, beginning of this week. And yes, so those conversations take place. As you know, we can't, you know, direct someone necessarily to go home, but if, you know, someone appears to be under the weather, the conversation in this case was had and, you know, they were strongly encouraged to go home and so we do that.
Yeah, and the reason why I bring it up now with the chief here, I didn't know if it would be incumbent upon whoever the department head was to call the fire department, come down, take a temperature, see how they're doing, and then in turn, you know, say, we really encourage you to rest.
So what I can say is that we did have a pretty substantial meeting about this, first thing, Monday morning, about how we were going to proceed as a town. And that was brought up specifically by Jeff. If someone, you know, feels under the weather but they feel like they need to come in, there's been some adjustments put in place that he's allowing us to get our people to go and encouraging them to not be in the workplace sick, where normally it's a little less stringent to have someone kind of approach an employee and say, hey, you don't look great, maybe you should take off. So we've done a good job with that and I can honestly say, I mean, I haven't been an employee of the town as long as a lot of them. However, it's worked in a lot of different industries, I'm very proud of how the manager stepped up in this case and has really relaxed some of the, some of the kind of guidelines for letting people who are sick kind of just go home and make sure that we're not bringing, you know, any sort of angst to the other employees that are here.
And I guess to that point, employees have been advised that if they have any question whatsoever about their symptoms, you know, they should, you know, talk to their primary care physician or even talk to Shelley if there's any question they might have about their particular circumstance. Certainly, you know, one of the things I recognize is, you know, that we have people of varying ages that work for us and, you know, unbeknownst to most of us or any of us really because of the HIPAA requirement, certain individuals have, you know, may have a compromised immune system. And the word was put out that if people are not comfortable working because they have some concerns about their particular circumstances, they can opt to call in and that would be, you know, considered a sick day. So trying to recognize that those kind of circumstances have, you know, happened.
Well, Chief, thank you very much. I know that you have matters to attend to, so we'll certainly excuse you, but we appreciate your leadership and thank you. And to all the men and women in both the police and fire department, thank you and please be safe.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And before we move forward, does anyone have any more questions for the manager? I know I'm eager to ask the manager to explain to us what a declaration of an emergency, state of emergency for the town of Wilmington would look like, but I want to open it up to anybody else who has questions for the manager. Seeing none, Mr. Hall, if you could explain to us the advantage if this board was to move forward under this appointment with declaring a state of emergency in Wilmington. Again, noted earlier that we're obviously in a state of emergency in Massachusetts and nationwide, but there are advantages if we do take it up as a board.
That's right. So in the event that the board was to choose to declare a local state of emergency, there's a provision of law, Chapter 44, Section 31, that recognizes that in these states of emergency, there's a greater level of flexibility provided for expenditure of funds. And I'm just referencing a section of the law here. It indicates that the, in instances including, major disasters, including but not limited to flood, drought, fire, hurricane, earthquake, storm or other catastrophe, whether natural or otherwise, which impose an immediate threat to the health or safety of persons or property, and then only upon declaration by the governor of the state of emergency with respect to a disaster or by a vote, references cities or in a town by a majority of the selectmen, payments of liabilities incurred under the authority of this section may be made with written approval of the director, in this case, of the Department of Revenue, from any available funds in the treasury. So essentially, it provides a greater level of financial flexibility. If, for example, in the accounts that Shelley has access to, we were in a place where we didn't have the funds within her accounts to deal with something subject to the approval of the Department of Revenue, we would be able to expend additional funds.
Great. And I also think it's worth noting that I had a conversation with town council today and his, he advised me that this would be an appropriate step for this board to take, considering the facts he just laid out, so. Are there any questions on that? Any discussion? Would anybody like to offer a motion?
I said it's a question, so I just want to make sure that I understand this correct. Is this really done in contemplation of there not being a town meeting prior to July 1st so that we can spend money in fiscal '21 just to continue operations?
Well, certainly that, it would help in that situation if we were not able to establish a, if we had to postpone the annual town meeting until after the fiscal year, it would provide, you know, one additional tool to allow us to get the job done, so to speak. You know, there's legislation that is, you know, there's been so many different legislative pieces that have been flying around here in the last week, it's hard to remember which ones have passed yet and which ones are still on the docket. But I know there's at least contemplation, if not it may have already been executed, the prospect of a 1/12 budget, which cities have the authorization to do right now, but not, towns do not. So that may also, or would certainly also be a tool if we're not able to have a town meeting before the end of the fiscal year. But this is just really one more tool for the town in terms of financial flexibility.
So is, what is the benefit for the remainder of fiscal '20? Is that if the Board of Health, if the Health Department runs out of funds, then we can access free cash or some other reserve to cover the remaining expenses?
That's my understanding, subject to the Department of Revenue, that we could identify another source within the town budget to take the funds from.
Okay, and this doesn't obligate us to do any of that, it's just providing the flexibility or the option.
That's right.
On the worst-case scenario.
Yes.
Financially.
I should note that many other communities have taken this action. Barrika did it yesterday, Tewksbury did it this morning, just to name a few. So we're seeing this throughout the Commonwealth.
Can I just ask a follow-up to what Chuckman Eaton's asking? I know when the Commonwealth declares a state of emergency, it allows them access to different federal funding. Do we, are we aware of if we have, if we vote on this and approve it tonight? Are there any additional funds that the state of Massachusetts has available for towns in this situation? Should it become necessary at this point or is it just something that it really allows us to access our own reserves?
As far as I know, it allows us to access our own reserves. I don't believe that a local state of emergency provides any additional opportunities for federal or state funds. Certainly with the declaration that the governor issued, there are, that opens up some opportunities. And one of the things that I neglected to mention, but again, to Chief Cavanagh as the point person on this, there's the strong likelihood that the town would be reimbursed to some measure for costs associated with this emergency. So Chief Cavanagh has made a point of advising all the various department heads, to the extent that you're incurring costs that can be attributed to the coronavirus, keep track of them, because he's the one in the end that will ultimately pull all that together and issue a submittal for FEMA reimbursement. But I don't believe that this particular local emergency would open up additional funding sources.
Mr. Kira.
Yeah, you may not know this right now, but what would be the, the protocol on how to access those funds? Who would be giving the permission on that? Would it come from the Board of Selectmen in signing a warrant? Would it come through the accounting department with Mr. Perry or the treasurer's office with Pam McKenzie? I mean, how is that going to play out? Do we know yet?
I don't. I, certainly, that would be an issue that I would want to have some further discussions with Brian Perry and others about, but as a practical matter, the way I would envision this is, you know, if we are in a situation where we know we have to incur expenditures in a given department and that we're going to exceed, you know, there would be a meeting with the department head, Brian, Perry, myself and Carrie, to discuss, you know, what are the options here? Is this something that is, in fact, critical? I would certainly want to make the board aware of the situation, but in terms of who ultimately has the authority to give the green light, that's something I'd have to check out.
Thank you.
And again, this doesn't guarantee that we would take this step, but it gives us the ability to do so moving forward with so much uncertainty. I know we're going to take it up later, when we might meet again, but I think it's critical that we take this step to put the town in a good position. We're very, very lucky that we have the free cash accounts that we do in reserve for rainy days. Like, I guess you could consider this definitely a rainy day at this point and for the weeks and months ahead, so I think this would be an important step. Mr. Ree.
I did have one question. If we were to go forward with this, would it be for a time certain or would it be an indefinite declaration of a state of emergency?
So I believe in the language itself, it references, "This shall remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the conditions leading to this declaration no longer exist." So I think it ultimately becomes the board's decision as to when the emergency has abated that I suspect may run in line with the governor's declaration, but...
Is there any other questions or comments? Anybody like to offer a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on declaring a state of emergency here in Wilmington locally? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. And we have a declaration prepared.
Yes.
So if members could, we'll do this after the meeting, sign off before they leave. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hall before we move forward? Okay, next up, we have communications. Mr. Hall.
So first, under communications, a notice from the town moderator, Robert G. Peterson, Jr., regarding recess and continuation of the annual town meeting until Saturday, May 30, 2020. Just to read into the record, this came over on the 17th from the moderator. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts general law, Chapter 39, Section 10A, that the town moderator has determined that due to the public health and safety risks posed by the novel coronavirus COVID-19, voters may be unable to attend the town, Town of Wilmington's annual town meeting as scheduled for May 2nd, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. at the Wilmington High School Auditorium, Church Street in said Town of Wilmington. The town moderator makes this determination after consulting with the chair of the Board of Selectmen, chair of the Finance Committee, fire chief, police chief, town manager and other Town of Wilmington department heads. This decision to recess and continue our annual town meeting is being taken to address the ongoing public health and safety issues relative to the COVID-19 pandemic and in recognition of the state of emergency declared for the Commonwealth and the restrictions on public gatherings issued by the governor. The recessed and continued annual town meeting shall be held on Saturday, May 30, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. in the Janet Benton, Joanne Benton Auditorium, Wilmington High School, Church Street in the Town of Wilmington. Determination of the town moderator shall be effective as of 10:30 a.m. on May 2nd, 2020.
Thank you.
Next, under correspondence, I received an email earlier in the week from Jarrett Balter on behalf of the Wilmington Little League Board of Directors. I would like to, actually, unfortunately, this was the original letter, email that went out, but he was notifying us of the cancellation of the Little League parade in light of the current circumstances.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to one and only board to consider item, which is establishing a date for our next Board of Selectmen meeting. And before we begin discussion on that, I just want to mention that the manager and I have discussed measures we can take in the, in the event that we can no longer meet in person. And I've asked him to work with our IT director, John O'Neil, to see that each member would be comfortable and set up properly if we needed to meet remotely. So I wanted to make sure that he will be reaching out to each of us, I think, individually to make sure the comfort was there and that if somebody needed assistance, walking through the possibility of having to meet remotely. I mentioned earlier, the school committee met remotely last night and I thought it was a success. It was about roughly a 39, 40-minute meeting and it was quite interesting, first time I'd ever seen that happen. And it's going on across the state. I know Tewksbury met this morning, Board of Selectmen, some remotely, some in person. Barrika met remotely only yesterday. So a number of different things are happening under the new guidelines that have been presented to us by the governor. And so I put that out there. I hope that we will be able to meet together in the same room again in a short time so we can continue to take up the normal business of the town. There are a lot of pressing issues, as you all know, that we need to take up, but I thought tonight that there was nothing more important than being updated on what's going on here with the health crisis. So with that, we do need to try to discuss a new, a next meeting date for this board.
So just for the board's information and recall, the next scheduled meeting is April 13th, but I do believe it would be advisable to meet prior to that date.
Right. And we can always set a date and if we have to cancel it, it gets canceled for things out of our control, that may happen, but I think it's important that we try to set a date. Keep in mind that almost all other meetings have been canceled at this point. We don't have a calendar of events that we're up against in terms of scheduling conflicts, so nothing really is out of the realm of meeting. Here we are on a Friday afternoon, so I'm open to any and all suggestions on when we should meet next or hope to.
Should we go to April 6th, Monday, April 6th?
Any objection?
And then after that, we go back to the regular cycle, which next one would be April 27th?
Any other thoughts, suggestions, objections?
Do we want to go two and a half weeks?
Yeah, I think in our conversations earlier, Jeff, we were hoping to try to meet sooner than later.
Right, so the, you know, clearly, one of the items that was slated to be discussed at the meeting on the 23rd was the Princeton Properties proposal. As you recall, the board authorized the submission of the local initiative program application. That requires the signature of the chairman, but would also, you know, I think need to be done at a selectmen's meeting and then... And then part of that is the sign off by the Board of Selectmen of the development agreement. You know, there, of course, it's hard to say what's going on with the timeframes at the state level, but I've had a number of emails from representatives from Princeton concerned about being able to get the application into HCD, Housing and Community Development, in time to get a response back from them and then begin to have conversations with the Board of Appeals and Conservation. So that's, that's one item that comes to mind that has some time sensitivity to it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kira.
You know, we can go to, we can talk about this all day, I suppose. We could go to March 30th. I don't believe that there's a meeting there. There was a Rink Committee meeting, but I'm assuming that that would be canceled. But what does the, what do you recommend, Mr. Hall, would be for us to meet in order to meet those deadlines for, for that project?
I, my preference would be the 30th over the 6th. I think the, the sooner the better, yeah.
I'm available the 30th. I would suggest if there's a possibility that we have to meet remotely. I know that the school committee meeting yesterday was limited to 100 participants. So I know that Zoom, which, if, if that was the platform that we would be using, does have the ability to increase that to 500 participants, that, that happen. So I appreciate certainly the, the effort and of WCTV being here, but if we're having to use another platform for broadcasting, I want to make sure that as many people have access to it as possible. So I'm not sure if WCTV can broadcast directly from Zoom. They probably can, I'm just not an AV expert, but I just want to make sure that we're opening it up for as many people to, I guess, observe what's going on as possible.
There have been discussions of the last several days with John O'Neill, the IT Director, and Zoom is what we're going to be using for other meetings that we have in the coming weeks, I would expect. And it's my understanding that the version he is looking at has the capacity of 1,000.
Even better. Thank you.
Great. So is there any objection to meeting on the scheduling, a meeting, an in-person meeting for Monday, March 30th? Mr. Kira would like to...
No, just to make sure that we get a hold of Chairman Di Giovanni about that Rink Committee meeting, to ask him to postpone it.
Thank you. Anybody like to put that in the form of a motion?
Show move.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Monday, March 30th? It's unanimous, and we'll, we'll shoot for 7:00 p.m. as we normally would. It's also important to note that we will not be meeting this coming Monday. I want to remind folks that that was previously scheduled, we will not be meeting. And so, thank you for that, folks. And again, please anticipate communication coming from the manager's office or from Town Hall in preparation that we ever had to meet remotely. I want to make sure that each member is comfortable with that, and hopefully that won't be the case, but we need to prepare. Announcements? Does anybody have an announcement?
I just wanted to thank you, Chairman Mendel, for all of your communication this week. Jeff, I, I can only imagine the amount of time that you've both spent and how you, that you've spared us from. I appreciate getting the updates. I feel like we've definitely been kept in the loop, but I also know that whatever time we've spent, or I've spent, you've spent, you know, an unbelievable amount more than that. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you both. I know this is kind of unprecedented times, and I appreciate you keeping us in the loop and giving us the updates as you've been getting them. And I also just wanted to know, you know, to Wilmington, putting on a different hat for a second, you know, we started putting out on Facebook, Wear One Wilmington, about anyone who needs help. And in typical Wilmington spirit, we haven't been getting much asked for help, but we've been getting tons of people saying, "How can we help?" And I just think that's amazing. I think, you know, it's really difficult for all of us who, in times like this, want to get together and kind of rally and, and show, you know, force and numbers together, realizing that the best way that we can handle this is to be separate and apart. But we're here for each other. Hopefully, if anyone hears of anything that we can do to help, I think I speak for all of us, please let us know how we can help, how we can coordinate efforts to, to keep everyone safe and healthy as much as we can. So I just wanted to thank you all for that.
Thank you very much. It's been a team effort, and I appreciate everybody helping to spread the word. Mr. Eaton.
I do want to echo many of Ms. Omohony's thoughts in the amount of work that you, Mr. Chair, and you, Mr. Hall, have put in. It's been a monumental task coordinating a, a moving target and how the town responds. And I wanted to add that I am so appreciative of the work and the grit that the town employees have shown in continuing to show up to work with something that is certainly community, the community anxiety level is pretty high, and I think that that's an international point at this point. But to have town employees continuing to show up to serve the town of Wilmington, I think is very admirable. I think working for a municipality sometimes doesn't lend itself to a lot of glory, but it is very much appreciated. And I, I think that we, we have gathered a very hard-working, honorable crew working for the town, and I appreciate their continued grit as we move forward.
Thank you. Any other announcements, Mr. McCoy? Announcements?
No, just echo my colleagues' comments about, you know, how Wilmington comes together in, in the worst of times and really steps forward as, as a team and a unit. And thank you, Mr. Mendel and Mr. Hall, for your efforts in keeping everybody informed and certainly all the first responders out there and the businesses that are stepping up. One thing that I would like to mention, though, is, and I don't know if we have any sort of update on it, is the food pantry that we have in town. And I'm sure that that's going to be stressed out shortly, I can imagine. So I would hope that, and I know businesses are doing their part now, and companies and individuals, but I hope that people keep that somewhat in the backs of their mind and they push it forward a little bit, and maybe, you know, when they're out shopping, they can get an extra can or something, or even make a contribution through the Wilmington Community Fund so that they can in turn go out and buy the, the needed products that, that will help to keep that, that food pantry supplied. I think we need to keep that also in our minds here.
I just, I don't mean to interrupt, but I know the churches also have local food pantries through the church, and with the church is being closed right now, that's been an issue. So that's actually something that I've reached out to Emily Lamachia at the Housing Authority, I'm going to reach out to Terry. If the food pantry, because of kind of the governor's orders, can't really open the way they normally do, the hope would be that we can kind of create some makeshift situations or deliveries. Like I said, I, we have like 30 people right now who want to help, and no one's looking for the help just yet, but I think there's probably a way we can make sure people get it if they need it. So please let your kind of points of contact know what you need and when you need it so that the people who want to help can help, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate, Mr. Kira, talking about the food pantry, and it slipped my mind, and obviously, everyone's doing what they can. I can honestly say Jeff's kept me in the loop on a daily basis as needed when it comes across, because he knows my high-tech capability. And, but when you mentioned a food pantry, I'd like just to give kudos to my wife. She had that art show, and she was able to raise $320 from what she's done as an artist, and she's going to be giving a check hopefully to the food pantry soon. And I would just like to give her kudos, and it means people coming together, and everyone does a fantastic job in volunteerism, and, and I just wanted to make that, and thanks for, thanks.
Yeah, and I think we can all, we could probably sit here for the rest of the night and point to examples that have gone on in the last couple of days from, from companies, businesses, and residents. It's just incredible. It's incredibly moving to see some of these. Some of, one was even highlighted on Channel 4, BZ. If you haven't seen that, you're going to want to see it. It's just incredible, outpouring, but it's, you know, it's unbelievable, and to your point, it's not surprising at all. I just wanted to close with one announcement myself. We mentioned a number of times, it's a very fluid situation, and this is very uncharted waters for all of us. Appreciate the, but it's really been a team effort, and we are at a critical point in our history. Each of us needs to do our part to stop the spread of the virus. The top priority of this board is the health and safety of every resident in our community and every employee of the town of Wilmington who is working to keep our community moving forward. We are taking this crisis very serious, and we continue to provide you with updates as soon as we get them. You know, I, I'm reminded that I'm sure all of us can point to a loved one who at some point in our history went off to war in, in defense of our freedom, and I can't help but think that I'm being asked to stay home and protect my family, and it's the least I can do to keep my family safe and, and the community around me safe. So although it's been a hectic week for a lot of people, myself included, my, I have a three-year-old and an 18-month-old today, it's been absolute chaos in my house for the last week or so, but thank goodness for my wife being so patient. But I can't help but think that I may never get this time again with my kids, this much time. So especially at that age, and I'm really trying to make the best of it, and I would encourage all of us to try to make the best of it, because a lot of businesses are closed, you know, stores have closed, but the town of Wilmington is not closed, the strength of this community will never close, and the time that you're getting to spend with your immediate family will never be closed. So I would encourage everybody to enjoy and try to make the best and reconnect with your, with your immediate family while we have this time. And let's remain vigilant, let's use caution, and follow the guidance from our public health officials, and we will get through this together. So thank you for that. Does anybody have any new business?
I'd just like to say quickly, hopefully that we meet again. If we don't, I've had a pleasure working with everybody, and I just wish to continue after my term ends, hopefully stick with the hockey rink, and I would like to still stay on the MBT advisory board, you know, after the term. I'm hoping that we do meet again, I'm optimistic that we will, and positive, but if that doesn't happen, I just wanted to convey that message. And I really like the point, Mr. Chairman, you brought up early about the local businesses stepping up to the plate and the supermarkets. And everybody knows I love, and I talk about my son, Chris, he goes to New Path and Woben and they had to close, so that meant a little bit something, because they have routine. And I said to my son, "Listen, there's something bad that's going on, we have to work together. Do you still want to work at Market Basket?" So we had some insight on what's going on. He goes, "Nope, Dad, I want to work and help people." So he's working at Market Basket Monday to Wednesday, doing his thing, and they're doing an outstanding job by keeping their hands clean and putting the gloves on. All the supermarkets, Lucci's, Eli's, I've been on all of them, so that was really nice of you to touch upon that. And hey, we all got to eat, right? Maybe some more, a little bit more than others, but, you know, we got to, all right, thanks.
Well, Mr. McCoy, thank you for that, but we have every intention of meeting on March 30th, and we hope that we'll certainly meet again, and that, that is our hope at this point. Any other new business? Seeing none, with the disclaimer that everything is up in the air? We'll attempt our best shot at important dates.
Important dates. So April 1st is a brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, on April 4th, a brush drop-off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. April 6th through the 10th is curbside collection of yard waste. April 6th, the last date registered to vote for the annual town elections and town meeting. Town Clerk's office will be open from 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And this is, again, subject to access, obviously, that remains to be determined, and we'll get information about how that's going to work. Brush drop-off, again, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. April 8th. April 11th, another brush drop-off, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. April 13th. At this point, it looks like, as I understand it, that will not be a meeting, will not meet again after the 30th, it'll be the 27th, correct?
I would imagine we'll, we'll take that up at the next meeting, and I think we're going one day at a time here.
April 15th, brush drop-off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The 18th of April, brush drop-off, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. April 20th, offices are closed for Patriots Day. Again, April 21st to the 25th, curbside collection of yard waste. And then brush drop-offs, again, the 22nd of April, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The 25th of April, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. At this point in time, April 25th is the annual town elections, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Selectmen's meeting on the 27th of April, 7:00 p.m. And then another curbside collection, running from May 2nd to May 8th. The Finance Committee Public Hearing, Finance and Planning Board Joint Committee, Joint Public Hearing, scheduled for the 12th of May at 7:00 p.m. This is to review the warrant for the annual town meeting. And then the annual town meeting is scheduled for May 30th at the High School Auditorium, 10:30.
Okay. And with that, we'll motion to adjourn. Please stay informed and stay healthy. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Good night, everyone. Be safe.